I'll to order the April 18th meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three commissioners. And do I see Lori Schreiber in the back? I'm going to ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Great, thank you all for being here today. First, I wanted to say in early April, I faced a heartbreaking loss in losing both two most influential women in my life, my mother and my grandmother. I want to extend my deepest gratitude to my colleagues here in Montgomery County and the broader community for the overwhelming support you provided me and my family during this tough period. The comforting words and gestures truly bring light in our darkest days. When I reflect on the lives of my mom and grandmother, I'm overwhelmed with pride. I was fortunate enough to be raised by two remarkable women who exemplified the essence of how we all should live our lives. They dedicated themselves to public service, tirelessly educating vulnerable youth, and generously gave up their time to their community. I always admired their work and the sacrifices they made to ensure my brother and I had more opportunities than they did. My grandmother's journey growing up in a time when basic rights were denied to her is particularly inspiring. Despite facing hatred and bigotry, she persevered, excelling in college, earning recognition as PA State Teacher of the Year in 1972, and she received an honorary doctorate from Bluefield State University in West Virginia. My mom's selflessness knew no bounds, from assisting me in purchasing my first home to warmly welcoming friends into our home when we were kids, and her kindness was just boundless. Her unwavering advocacy for education, especially during times when our school doubted us, will forever motivate me. I'm grateful to have witnessed her deep passion for education and the positive impact she had on countless students across Philadelphia, ultimately changing the course of their lives. The past few years with my mom were quite challenging, and I now have an appreciation for those that are caring for aging parents. But I couldn't imagine, you know, a world in which I didn't spend those last couple of years caring for my mother. Her final words of encouragement to me when I doubted running for Commissioner still resonate: "Of course you should. I've prepared you for this." I'm thankful for her presence during my swearing-in in January, where her support symbolized decades of hard work and sacrifice. My achievements are a testament to her. As I face the future without these incredible women in my life, I'm confident that their legacy will continue to inspire me as I serve this great community. So, thank you for all of the support during this difficult time. Next, on a positive note, I'd like to welcome Mr. Benjamin Field as our newest county solicitor. Ben's first day of work was Monday, and I'm glad he came back for day number four. As commissioners, we work hand in hand with our solicitor, who ensures that our various policy goals and initiatives are aligned with the laws of the county and the Commonwealth. Ben is a brilliant attorney. I've already seen firsthand the contributions that he will make to our organization, and he joins us after seven years with the City of Philadelphia's Affirmative and Special Litigation Unit. In Philadelphia, he earned a reputation as a rigorous problem solver, whose legal expertise served to protect the rights of citizens while working towards the city's policy goals. Ben worked extensively on the city's opioid lawsuit and a suit against Wells Fargo for discriminatory mortgage practices. He will be a tremendous asset to our organization. And I want to also again thank our interim solicitor, Ray McGarry, who stepped up to serve the county beginning in July of 2023. Thanks again for all of your support, Ray. Next, I'd like to acknowledge that last week, the county announced our new paid parental leave policy, which offers up to 12 weeks of paid leave to county employees and an additional four weeks for parents that have complications, medical complications, with either the birthing parent or the child. We believe that supporting working families here in Montgomery County is and will be a priority for us, and this enhanced policy really reflects our commitment to helping families thrive at both work and at home. So, right here in Montgomery County, we want to set a standard for the Commonwealth to follow, and this benefit really helps us be a leader on that front. We hope that others will be inspired to follow suit, and as a society, this is a need for parents. As a new mom, well, I keep saying that Max is four, but I still remember, you know, as a new mom, it's really important to give parents the time that they need to bond with a new baby and not worry about the financial worries of not working and taking time off. So, we're really excited, and more to come on other ways we'll support our employees right here in Montgomery County. A couple more things for me. I know you missed me the last meeting, so I figured I'd talk a little longer. In a little over a week, we'll be hosting two public meetings to discuss the rebuilding of the Narstown Public Library, the library in which I went to as a child. There will be two sessions held at the library on Monday, the 29th, a daytime session at 1:00 p.m. and an evening session at 6:00 p.m. The library team has stressed the importance of the community's involvement in the design of the new library. The goal is to make significant upgrades to convert the library into a modern facility. A lot has changed since the library was built in 1976 and since I went there in the 90s, both in terms of the services libraries offer and the technology base behind those services. We want all residents to help the library reimagine how the campus can be reconstructed to serve the widest possible audience regardless of socioeconomic status. We will also have Spanish language translators that will be present to allow people to support people for the session on April 29. And I think, a couple more things. On April 30th, the Montgomery County Maternal and Early Childhood Convention is hosting a conference called Mothers Alive. This conference is the first time we're bringing together experts, practitioners, policymakers, and innovators to share best practice to reduce disparities in maternal mortality and morbidity. The county is proud to partner with nonprofits such as Maternity Care Coalition to improve birth outcomes and improve family stability and well-being. Dr. Tamara Williams, our Director of the County's Department of Health and Human Services, one of the speakers, along with people from CHOP, Maternity Care Coalition, plus city, state, and federal agencies. According to the CDC, the maternal mortality rate for black women is 2.6 times higher than the rate of white and Hispanic women. I think of the delivery of my son Max, and I had quite a traumatic delivery with him, and had the doctor made some simple, paid attention to some simple information in terms of my symptoms, my delivery would have gone a lot better. And so, we have work to do around maternal health here in Pennsylvania and in Montgomery County, so I'm excited for the team to be coming together to talk about this important topic. And lastly, I want to acknowledge our Way to Go Monka winners for the month of April. Robert Cartier, GIS, Cardographer Planning Commission. I know, is Robert here or is anyone here from? No, Robert's not here. Rob expertly ran the Planning Commission's virtual meetings and events during the pandemic and has since transitioned to audiovisual production. These aren't the first duties in his job description, but he has excelled in them while also thriving in his primary responsibilities, so congratulations to Rob. Dylan Feldman, he's a sergeant at the correctional facility. Sergeant Feldman is fiercely dedicated to his duties and sets the standard of service for both newcomers and veteran officers at the correctional facility. Eric Gihara, Security Officer in Security. In 14 years of service for the county, Eric has been an exemplary team player who always makes time for his colleagues and, most important, for those in need of quick responses and resolutions to security calls. Congratulations, Eric. And Ed Greit is a Park Ranger from our Parks, Trails, and Historic Sites team. Ed went above and beyond his duties as Park Ranger recently when he helped an unhoused veteran and longtime county trail user connect with his family and access the help he needed. Thank you for your service. And lastly, Stacy Richardson, OSP. Is she here? Hi, Stacy. Stand up, let's celebrate you. Thanks for the collapse. Stacy is an integral member of our Court Services Team, whose professionalism, open-mindedness, and learning mindset makes her an invaluable asset to her colleagues. Congratulations, Stacy, and thank you for being here. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Matisia for some comments. Sorry it took so long.
Thank you. Just to follow up on a couple of brief things you said. One, welcome to our Solicitor Ben. Really thrilled and excited to work with you, and thank you to Ray for your service in the interim. We have a lot of important work ahead of us. I think we're all very thrilled that we first passed this new parental leave policy as one of the first steps that we're taking to really boost and support our employees and set an example for counties around the Commonwealth to follow suit in terms of the kind of benefits and support that we see often in the private sector and changing in the nonprofit sector and elsewhere, but we think our employees should have that as well and hope to see continued policies implemented by our neighboring counties and others. So, this Tuesday is an election day. Pennsylvania's primary is on Tuesday. For those of you who are voting by mail, we want to encourage everyone to use our drop boxes. So, drop boxes are now open 24/7 for the first time to add to the convenience and ability for people to submit them whenever they can. There are 12 secure drop boxes located around the county, so all within relatively close distance to anyone, no matter where you live. I'll be voting today by Dropbox at Luddington Library in Bryn Mawr. If you have any questions or you want to see those addresses, just go to montgomerycountypa.gov. There'll be a pop-up window where you can see the location for your Dropbox right away, so you don't even have to search around the website. It's right there on the main page. Voters can also come anytime today and tomorrow before 8:00 p.m. to One Montgomery Plaza. So, we have our staff here. I want to thank the Voter Services Staff. They pull a lot of long hours around this time of year. They're going to be working over the weekend. They're going to be processing the many thousands of ballots that are already coming in and will prepare at the same time for Election Day at the polls on Tuesday. And as you all should know, polls will be open 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and you can find your polling place, same thing, montgomerycountypa.gov/voters if you have questions on that. I also want to present a letter of commendation. So, in addition to our election next week, next week we have Earth Day, and that's going to be on Monday, April 22. Today, we have the pleasure of announcing a commendation of the staff, partners, and volunteers of the Montgomery County Master Watershed Steward Program. So, for that program, each year, we have a select group of people who are chosen through Penn State Extension. Participants attend a variety of training on topics from stream ecology and wetlands, invasive plants, water recreation, and stormwater management. They become certified master watershed stewards. It takes about 40 hours of training and 20 hours of service, plus completion of projects like tree planting and stream bank restoration and creating gardens. So, in 2023, Montgomery County, we had 64 volunteers who committed about 4,000 hours to this work, so we want to commend them and thank them for their dedication to our watersheds. And so, I'm going to ask to come up Kathleen Connolly, who's our Master Watershed Steward Coordinator. Kathleen, thank you so much for coming. Please give her a thank you for her service and work. And we have Jennifer Wendling at the Extension. Go ahead. Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. There's Erin Frederick, our State Coordinator. Is Erin here? Thank you, Erin. Stand up if you want. And you can all come up here, too. And then there's Drew Shaw, who's at the Planning Commission Environmental Planning Manager.
Drew's walking up.
Drew? Got it. Okay, so thank you, Drew. If you want to come up, we'll present you with a.
I'm going to bring two of our volunteers up this morning.
Oh, please. Yeah, yeah, tell me their names, too.
(Inaudible).
I should go get my cord. I'm sure this will run out soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Oh, yeah, I guess it's the same thing. My cord is worn.
(Inaudible).
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was, anyway, I guess it doesn't matter.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
So, I got a couple more brief comments. April is also Autism Acceptance Month. This is a time to raise awareness as well as promote inclusivity and further understanding of autism and neurodiversity. Pennsylvania, there are over 55,000 people who receive services for autism. We're one of the few states that gather this data as part of Pennsylvania's Autism Census. Early diagnosis and early intervention, plus a connected network for families, is critical for positive outcomes for families and community members, and so it's really important for us to recognize that there are services available and supports here in our county. So, I want to thank our county employees in the Health and Human Service Program offices, especially those who work in early intervention and those providing services to individuals with autism. Second, I want to just mention briefly, last weekend, I attended Laurel House's 25th Annual Gala. Commissioner DeBella did as well, and I know Commissioner Winder's been there in the past. It was a really important gathering of community leaders, supporters of Laurel House, and people with lived experience who really shared the value of the organization and the work they do to help in the domestic violence sphere and with homelessness as well, and I just want to congratulate them. It was a really fantastic event and I think was quite a success, so congrats to Laurel House. And then finally, Passover also begins next week, so I wish everyone a joyous Passover. We'll be hosting our first Seder at our house this year, so excited to feed our nine-month-old gefilte fish, for those of you who are aware, and to see how he likes it, but I hope everyone has a happy Passover. And I'll turn it over to Commissioner DeBella.
Great. Thank you. So, April's National Recognizes Fair Housing Month this year is the 56th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, which prohibits discrimination in housing because of race, color, national origin, religion, sex, disability, or familial status. The Office of Housing and Community Development, Montgomery County's Department of Health and Human Services, is hosting fair housing trainings throughout the year for nonprofit housing providers, developers, shelters, local municipalities, and service providers to ensure full understanding of the law. Residents can also reach out to the Housing Equality Center for Pennsylvania for free resources. This Saturday, April 20th, the Montgomery County Partners for Home Ownership is hosting an annual housing fair. This event takes place 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Colonial Middle School in Plymouth Meeting. This is for everyone who's thinking of buying a home and is a great starting point to have your questions answered by experts. Montgomery County's Office of Housing and Community Development will be there to share information on first-time homebuyers' grant opportunities. This event is free to attend. For more information and to sign up, visit the website. Saturday is also International Spring Festival. I know I'll be there, and I believe you guys are going as well. I have been there in the past. It's a great event where thousands of attendees every year get to experience the diversity and cultures of Montgomery County with dance, music, food, demonstrations, and much more. This is happening on 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at North Penn High School, and I look forward to seeing many of our residents there. If you haven't been there before, I highly recommend stopping. It's a great day, a great opportunity to see, you know, a lot of different cultural items throughout the, they spread out through the entire high school. I know the county will have several tables there, and my fellow commissioners, as I said, will be attending. And also, we've talked about this, and I'm really excited because this was one of the things that I was pushing for or recommended, and I know my fellow commissioners agreed and think it's a great opportunity for us to get out into Montgomery County to meet our residents. So, we're pleased to announce that May 23rd, our Board of Commissioners meeting will be our first of several evening meetings, and we are hosting, that we will be hosting across the county to be more accessible to our constituents. So, that first meeting is going to be held, as I said, May 23rd at Limerick Township Office at 646 West Ridge Pike, the township municipal building, again at 646 West Ridge Pike in Limerick, and I'm very happy that the commissioners are going on the road. This is first of many board meetings that we'll host around the county, and we hope to see many residents out in Limerick as well. And two other things, Commissioner Matisia, I know you mentioned about the.
Can I just make a correction? I think in my comments, I read off of the writing, I said eight to eight. Polls are open at seven.
I was just going to.
Yeah.
Well, I was going to do it in a nice way. I was going to say Commissioner Matisia was mentioning, that's the way I was going to do it. The polls are open on Tuesday, April 23rd, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. For those that like to sleep in late, you could go at 8:00 a.m. as well, but they do open and start at 7:00 a.m. See how we're coming for you?
I woke up at 5:00.
And that also, as mentioned, that, you know, we do have the drop boxes throughout Montgomery County, although I'm not, well, it's not a huge support of the 24/7 drop boxes. I think that, and there's probably be more discussion in the future, but I think that we definitely want to get, if you haven't already had the opportunity to mail your, get your ballots back, make sure you get them to one of the 12 or 13 drop boxes throughout Montgomery County. And then finally, as mentioned, Commissioner Matisia and myself, we're at the Laurel House Gala Saturday night. It was a great event. It's an amazing group of people that are doing wonderful things for our community and beyond, and anytime that anyone has the opportunity to support Laurel House, we highly recommend it. And then finally, I also had the opportunity earlier this week to attend the Honor Tour over in Bucks County. It's a volunteer group that bring our veterans down to Washington, D.C. every year, and they tour all the war memorials. There was hundreds of veterans. I didn't get the exact number, but what was really fun, and not fun, but honored to be there, was that we had several, many veterans from Montgomery County. I know there was over 100 of our veterans from Montgomery County that were on this tour as well, so I was over there, and it's just overwhelming when you see the amount of people that showed up in support of our veterans and when they're getting off the buses to go into, and it was at the Parks Casino, when they're getting off the buses to walk through the crowds of people appreciating everything that they've done for us and a lot of things that we may or may not agree with that occur in the county and throughout. Those things are happening because of our veterans. They made it happen, and that's what we always have to go back and recognize, that these, all those, all our veterans are just an amazing group of individuals that had and fought hard for our country. And finally, what was really fun, that's what I want to say, was that I got to meet one of the original Rosie derivatives, and Mae, she was just an incredible person, and she fought hard for years to make sure that Rosie derivatives were recognized in Washington, and they received, they finally received their Medal of Honor for all the hard work that they did during the war. So, again, thank you for, Neil, that was a fun night, Saturday night. We got to spend some time together, right? So, we, and I got to meet Neil's wife, very lovely, you know?
She is lovely.
She is.
She's really nice.
So, we pulled her off to the side, and we're like, Neil, really? No. No, she is really, yeah.
There was an anonymous, I think $10,000 donor, and Tom was very quick to tell me that that was him.
Well, I thought it was supposed to be between us.
So, it sounds like I missed all the fun, but Max.
And donuts at the end.
Max had a night at the Phillies game with his daycare, so that's where we.
Well, that was good, too.
So, thank you for going and representing us. Okay. All right, well, let's jump into our agenda. I'd like to invite our Clerk of Courts Lori Schreiber up to talk to us about Second Chance Month Resource Fair.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about this important event we have coming up later this month. As you just heard, my name is Lori Schreiber. I'm the Clerk of Courts in Montgomery County. Can I have the next slide, please? And for those of you who may not know what our office does, you hear all these different row office names, this is a little snapshot of some of the things that we do. The Clerk of Courts office is the filing office for the criminal courts in Montgomery County, so here's just a couple of the things we do. We do more things than that, but just to give you an idea. Next slide, please. So, you heard that April is the month of many things. We heard a couple of them a little bit earlier today, but it is also Second Chance Month. Each April, the U.S. Department of Justice celebrates Second Chance Month, recognizing the importance of helping individuals in their successful reentry from incarceration. According to the National Conference on State Legislatures, approximately 77 million Americans or one in every three working adults have some kind of police record. That could be a criminal record, which could be an arrest record, criminal charges, or even a conviction, and all of those things can create barriers to everything from jobs to getting licenses in occupational, different occupations, getting housing, from going to college, so higher education opportunities can be limited. Each year, more than 600,000 inmates are released from state and federal correctional facilities, transitioning back into the community, and another 11 million individuals cycle through local jails each year. So, in 2017, as you can see on this slide, the prison fellowship started this recognition of April as Second Chance Month, and the White House has been issuing proclamations every year since 2018. Next slide, please. There we go. Okay. So, the Clerk of Courts, last year, we started, we sponsored our first Second Chance Resource Fair to help improve the chances for people impacted by the criminal justice system. The event is primarily for people either reentering the community or the families of those who may have been incarcerated, but anyone who is invited who has been impacted by the criminal justice system. So, this is our flyer. You can see there's a little bit of where, when, all of that kind of information, and you can scan it if you want to get more information as well. That will take you to our website. And next slide, please. We had such an outpouring of interest last year with approximately 25 different organizations scheduled to be there and a lot of other ones on the waiting list, so we expanded this year. We outgrew the space we were in. We were at the Human Services Building last year, but this year, we moved to the Carver Center, and we anticipate approximately 42 vendors. Some of my fellow row officers from the Register of Wills, from the Prothonitaries Office will be there. We have an expungement clinic, so we'll have people from the Public Defender's Office and legal aid doing that. One of the things we were really pleased to offer last year and expand this year is a wellness. We outgrew the space we were in. We were at the Human Services Building last year, but this year, we moved to the Carver Center, and we anticipate approximately 42 vendors. Some of my fellow row officers from the Register of Wills, from the Prithonitaries Office will be there. We have an expungement clinic, so we'll have people from the Public Defender's Office and legal aid doing that. One of the things we were really pleased to offer last year and expand this year is a wellness area. So we had chair massage, we have a dental clinic, and so we have other health-related things there as well. So this gives you, again, just a snapshot of some of the different kinds of vendors that will be there. And next slide, please. So my staff, particularly Mandy Garofalo, who is here today, have worked very hard to make this event go as smoothly as possible. We, as, we would really like to have even more participants attend this event, so we're hoping that everybody listening today will help us share this information. Also, in addition, we have been sharing national and local statistics and information throughout this month on our Facebook page. The local statistics are from Montgomery County's Reentry Initiative Strategic Plan, along with other places as well. So I invite everyone to check out this information that we're sharing on our Facebook, and the link for Facebook's on here on this slide. Our hope by being here today is that everybody will spread the word, and that everybody knows that April has been declared Second Chance Month. In closing, I just want to read a few lines from this year's proclamation from the White House. It's much longer, I just took out a couple sentences that I'm going to share. America was founded on the promise of new beginnings. During Second Chance Month, we recommit to building a criminal justice system that lives up to those ideals so that people returning to their communities from jail or prison have a fair shot at the American dream. Studies show that when these needs are met, we do not just empower formerly incarcerated people, we prevent crime and make our communities safer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lori. I appreciate the work that you're doing in this area. Life is about second chances. We're, we're all imperfect, and, you know, unfortunately, those that enter into our criminal justice system, if we don't do programs like this, you know, the recidivism rate continues to climb, and so I appreciate you shepherding this work in Montgomery County.
Thank you. Thank you. As I just read in a recent newspaper article, trying to move away actually from second chance to fresh start, because some people never had a first chance.
Right. Yeah, there's definitely barriers as to why people land in the criminal justice system in the first place, so thank you for raising awareness.
Thank you.
Can you tell us a little bit about how we can help and what kind of outreach you do to, to reach people who would be able to benefit from services?
Yeah, so we're part of the Reentry Initiative in Montgomery County, so we attend their meetings, and there's, Mandy, do you know how many people go to that? There's a lot of people at that.
They always have to add extra chairs.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big organization, coalition of groups, so we go there. A lot of them are coming, and they're also helping us spread the word, and many of them are connected to us on the, on the Facebook page, and we're on Instagram as well.
Thank you for being here. Oh, we have a proclamation. Oh, we have a proclamation as well.
I didn't know if I was supposed to say that.
I don't know. I'm a little rusty. Next up, we have Laura Williamson to talk about the Montgomery County Trail Challenge. Welcome. How are you? Good to see you.
I'm good, thank you. So my name is Laura Williamson. I'm the Community Traffic Safety Program Coordinator for the Montgomery County Office of Public Health. I'm here to announce the Ninth Annual Monco Trail Challenge. And to start, let me explain what the Trail Challenge is. Okay, so the Monco Trail Challenge, it's kind of like a scavenger hunt along 18 participating trails throughout the county. Each trail has their own unique trail symbol, kind of like that one right there. It'll be a snake, a trout, an owl, some kind of animal, and the goal is to visit as many trails as possible and write down the symbol as proof that you visited. The Trail Challenge will run from December, from April 27th till December 2nd, so you have seven months to go to as many trails as possible. We also include three free spaces, so you can visit any park, trail, or historic site throughout the county or outside of the county, and it'll count towards the challenge. And we also have three achievement levels for all of you goal-oriented people out there, so you can earn a prize for going to five, 10, or 15 trails by the end of the challenge. And we really want to encourage people to enjoy the trail any way they want to, so you can walk, run, bike, even paddle down the Perkyum and Water Trail. And if you're kind of on the fence, if you want to join the challenge, you're not sure if the challenge is right for you, I have some reasons for why you should get out and go. First of all, it's free, and it's available for all people of all ages and capabilities. Last year, some of our youngest participants were under a year old, and some of our participants were in their late 80s, still hitting the trail and finding the symbols. Secondly, it improves mental health. Last year, our survey participants reported that doing the Trail Challenge, being outside in nature, and getting more physically active improved their mental health. It's an opportunity to get physically active. The Trail Challenge is a great way to get active and to stay active. Last year, our survey participants reported that they walked more, biked more, and ran more as a result of joining the Monco Trail Challenge. It can connect you with your community. Monco has so many beautiful parks, trails, and historic sites, and we also have great local businesses. And as a result of the Monco Trail Challenge, 63% of our participants reported that they learned more about Montgomery County from exploring the county. And finally, Monco is just so beautiful. We're really lucky to live in, live and work in a county that has hundreds of miles of trails and parks, and we also have beautiful township trails and historic sites, so we really got to take advantage of it and hit the trails. So what is new to 2024? This year, we added the Royersford Riverfront Trail to the Trail Challenge. With the Trussell Bridge just reopening back in January, this trail now connects with a fan favorite, the Skookel River Trail, so it made perfect sense to add it to our Trail Challenge this year. This year, we also added a trail map in the middle of our trail card, so people can now visualize how, how the trails intersect, and they can check off the trails that they visit. And this idea was actually birthed from feedback from our participants. So they wanted a printable map, so we gave them a printable map. And finally, we're up to 21 trails this year. This year, we have more participating trails than ever before, so we're really excited about that. I'm also excited to announce that we are going to have a Monco Trail Challenge kickoff on Saturday, April 27th, from 10 to 12:00 PM at Lorimer Park, with a rain date on Saturday, April 28th. At the event, we will, we will have a free helmet distribution for all families who attend. We'll have bike and pedestrian safety resources, fun activities, snacks, so it'll be a really fun morning, and we hope to have a good crowd. So today is the grand opening of the registration, so you can visit our website to register for the Monco Trail Challenge, and our website also has great resources. It has a map with GPS to get you to the trails, it has tips on completing the Trail Challenge, safety tips while you visit the trails, and we also have scavenger hunts for the little challengers. So thank you so much for having me this morning, and good luck completing the Monco Trail Challenge.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It sounds like Lee and Commissioner DiBello will have a little competition.
Yeah, we already-
Sounds, sounds that way, yeah.
Yeah, do it, of course.
So I'm excited to get, get Max out on the trails this, this year. I think about Commissioner, former Commissioner Lawrence and his commitment to this, this Trail Challenge. I will not be running like he did, or biking. He was an avid biker, but we will get out and support the Trail Challenge, so thank you for being here to talk about it.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we'd like to talk about National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. So we have a whole team here to give us a presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for having us. My name is Kevin Reardon, and I am the Assistant Director of Operations for the Emergency, Emergency Communications Division at the Department of Public Safety. I'm here today to highlight National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. It's held annually during the second week of April to honor public safety telecommunications for their commitment and dedication to serving the public in some of their most trying times. Our telecommunications here in Montgomery County are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services and an essential link for our officers, firefighters, and EMS providers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with incident information, and ensuring their safety. The Department of Public Safety would like to recognize our public safety telecommunications who achieve the highest degree of excellence in support of the public safety mission and promoting the enthusiasm, devotion, and strong regard for each dispatch and call answered. Each one of you is compassionate and understanding, and often bears the weight of every emergency call you handle. Your impact on so many lives will be everlasting, and we honor you for the critical role you play in keeping our communities and responders safe and secure. With that, we'd like to play a quick minute and a half video, and then present two awards.
My name is Zach.
My name is Jody.
My name is Darrell.
And I'm a 911 telecommunicator.
I am a 911 telecommunicator.
911 dispatcher, telecommunicator.
In simple terms, we take in information.
A 911 telecommunicator is responsible for answering the phones and dispatching the appropriate resources.
We are the first line of defense. You call 911, you'll get us.
And we dispatch and/or give the information to the people that it needs to, to get help.
Whether that be the police, EMS, or the fire department.
When you get that call with somebody, you know it's their worst day, you know what I mean, on the other side of the phone.
The calls are always different, the people are always different.
Could be somebody who's in cardiac arrest, or somebody that's having a child and walking them through how to deliver the child over the phone.
Anytime that you need help for pretty much anything, we are there to answer the calls.
And they just know when they call here, they're getting the best help, the best help in the world, I would say, over in Montgomery County. And they call us, they know we're going to provide the resources, the needs, we're going to help them any way we can.
It is the greatest feeling to know that you leave here every day and helped at least one person.
But everybody not going to say thank you, but you just know that you gave them their best help, their best chance.
It is the most rewarding job, I think, that I have ever done.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Tori Rosa, the Platoon Commander for the Department of Public Safety. I oversee day-to-day operations in the center. As we celebrate Telecommunicator Week, I'm here to introduce our Telecommunicator Award recipients, Chris Ott and Felicia Wittenberger. We are lucky and proud to have both of them on our team and serving the residents of Montgomery County. Our Telecommunicator of the Year is Chris Ott. Chris has been with the department for five and a half years. He is one of our tenured 911 call takers. He is most deserving of this award. In 2023, he received a chief's commendation from Lower Marion Fire Department. Chris took the initial call from a female who was quickly overwhelmed with smoke and fire conditions and couldn't find her way out of the residence. Dispatcher Ott spent 10 minutes speaking with her and providing comfort to her, all while planning ways to help get the resident to safety and disseminating crucial information to the responders en route and to personnel on location. He provided the essential link between the homeowner and the rescue team conducting the search, and his compassion and training undoubtedly assisted in this very successful outcome. He also received another commendation from Second Alarmers EMS Squad on a laceration call. He instructed the caller to make a homemade tourniquet using a belt and a spatler, spatula. Chris's instructions made that tourniquet work. It was, it's not an everyday call, so like, that was an ingenious and resourceful on Chris's part to make that tourniquet work until the responders got there. Some comments from his peers and supervisors. Chris is a hard worker, pleasure to work with. He is patient, kind, and funny. When asked that he loved, what he loved most about the job, he said he loved working for the people and being able to help them during a tough time. The supervisors can rely on Chris to help his peers. He is dedicated and an employee they can always count on. He mentors many people. If you are having a rough day, you can turn to Chris. He has a lot of jokes and laughter that can brighten anyone's day. He occasionally sings a good song, which makes coming to work a meaningful day to look forward to. He fills that challenging CTO role, helping new 911 telecommunications really love the job that we do. He truly cares about the job and the community he serves. This is evident in his calm, consistent performance. His perception, understanding, and compassion has and will continue to save lives. One of the supervisors said, "You are the epitome of what it means to be dedicated to your craft." We are lucky to have Chris pass on his knowledge and experience to new generations of telecommunications. Introducing Felicia Wittenberger. She's Telecommunicator Training of the Year. Felicia was hired in February of 2023. She was certified as a call taker. She displayed all the qualities we look for in a telecommunicator and received the following two recognitions on consecutive days. She performed CPR on a three-day-old. She made calm the entire time and made sure mom understood the instructions without overwhelming the mother. Due to Felicia's prompt instruction with CPR, the baby began to cry and was breathing when police arrived. She also took a burglary in progress from two young sisters who were home alone, and they were scared. She did an excellent job talking to both sisters and getting the information needed for responders while keeping them on the phone and remaining calm. Felicia's skills were quickly recognized, and she was moved to train as a police dispatcher, where she was certified after a few months in which she quickly excelled. Comments from her peers and supervisors. From the first day of class, she gets it. It's in her blood. She's a family, she is from a family of law enforcement. Felicia is respectful and has great work ethic. She is smart and will go far. She's been a natural, aside from her natural understanding of this job, she has an amazing personality. Always smiling and in a good mood is truly a pleasure having her on our shift and interacting with her on a daily basis. She has passion for the job. Felicia is always smiling and upbeat, she has a positive professional presence. Her accuracy and ability to effectively communicate with callers, coworkers, and field units always boosts morale, a positive energy that makes her a pleasure to work with every day.
We're going to present their awards.
So I just want to say congratulations to both Chris and Felicia. We'll have you come up here, but I'll say, I got, unfortunately, I had to call 911 on Friday night for my little guy and was connected with one of your 911 operators. He was, had choked on something and was in distress, and I called and got the 911 operator, and whoever was on the other end of that line calmed both my husband and I and helped us figure out the situation and wait for the ambulance to get there. Luckily, he's okay and continuing to terrorize our household, but that's, you know, but those are the types of moments, right? It's, it's great to have someone like you on the other end of the line, so thank you for all that you do. We know that the, you know, the work is hard and can be mentally taxing, but somebody has to do it, and I'm glad we have people like the two of you, so congratulations. Come on, Chris, I'm going to get you in the middle. Nice, nice to meet you. Thank you for being here.
Where you want me to stand?
Thanks for being here. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Are they going to give you the rest of the day off? All right, next up, we have Public Comments. I just want to remind everyone that today, this section of Public Comment is only for pending votes, resolutions, bids, RFPs, and contracts, and as a reminder, your comments should be limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone signed up for Public Comments? Yes, we have Joe Rooney.
Hi, my name's Joe Rooney. I wanted to talk about election integrity and security of the drop boxes. It was mentioned- It was mentioned by Commissioners, is this the right time to talk about it?
Mr. Rooney, there's time for general public comment for matter that may, in the future, come before the board for consideration later in the meeting. This is for matters that are on the agenda items F through J.
I'm sorry.
He's the new solicitor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was talking to the Commissioners.
It's public comment at the end. So what you want to refer to, what I believe what you want to talk about is, it's not, yeah, it's at the end, it's not on the agenda itself, so that'd be at the end.
And next up is David Morgan.
Morning Commissioners, I'm David Morgan, as you know, from Amber. And I'm talking about Exhibit B in the voting of contracts. The first one relates to the Justice Center furniture. And I'm aware that on the website, you'll see a time-lapse video of the Justice Center being built, which is sort of exterior. I wonder what's really in the floor plan for where this furniture is going to fill these new parts of this courthouse plan. So I asked about floor plans in the past, and as a taxpayer, I'd just like to know more about the concept of the Justice Center. It looks vast, and the courtrooms, I almost wonder if they're so large we can hear each other, because it looks like there's so much room to fill. So the furniture is going to fill that at a cost of $1.7 million, and I'm just wondering how far along we are, because it seems like we're almost at the end, if it's furniture. So if you could help me with that, maybe on the website detailing the expenditures and progress. Then the other one is three, the 18 West AREE Street Building. I have a question about really, to be sure, what is the function of this building? Is it for the DA? As I think Mr. T. Zach told us before, is it for certain functions that way with that office, or is it something other purposes? Four flights, and I noticed that, would you like to comment?
It's for the public defender.
Public defender, okay. Then, I noticed it says a brick, a new brick facade, and so, brick is very expensive. So just wondering, building, if it has integrity itself, the structural engineers, do we need an extra facade for this building? And so that's a, all these details add up. I, I believe, if I remember, in the past, Mr. Bonner mentioned that this property was purchased for $500,000, and so we have $9,000,000.5. So there, again, I'm asking about the review of this for good value, economic benefit for the taxpayers that we're not spending too much, because as I mentioned, we had a tax increase of 13%. We're paying that now in our tax bills last month and this month, and that, the tax increases are escalating from five to eight, to eight to 13, four years' worth, and I'm concerned that we get control of the escalation in taxes. And so anytime we can look at the expenditures and maybe find $10 million a quarter to go off the tax spending that's going on, spending that causes taxes to go up, that would be great, because we have a quarter just finished, March 31st. Maybe a review of what happened, it would be good to know what measures you've taken to reduce expenses. I know Mr. D'Orton in his presentations often says certain measures are taken, but what really can we do to keep our tax bill, perhaps a tax cut, if we have $10 million per quarter off of the spending?
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. That's it for agenda items.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the April 4th, 2024 meeting minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Okeja, any board comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next up, I'd like to invite Megan Brown for Personnel List Review.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioners Department Personnel List. It's a three-page document dated Wednesday, April 17th, 2024, with the timestamp of 9:00 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
Great, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the April 18th, 2024 Personnel Presentation as given by Ms. Megan Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello, any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Advertisement of Bids and RFPs, Montgomery County, Exhibit A. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Advertisement of Bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello, any board comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next up, Awards of Contract, Exhibit B. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello, any board comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Awards of Contract, Southeast PA Regional Task Force, Exhibit C. I'd like to make a motion to approve contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit C. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mckeja, any board comment? Hearing none, moving to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, General Public Comment. So as a reminder, this is on matters that may, are, or may be before the Board of Commissioners meeting and limit, limited to three minutes. Who do we have first?
We'll start with Joe Rooney.
All right, come on back up. We didn't make you wait that long, so.
I'd rather have six minutes.
Got three for now.
If I could listen to everything else, I'd love to get six minutes, girl, and stuff. Okay, I'm Joe Rooney, I live in Abington, and I emailed you all the information I'm going to talk about last night. I was contacted by a friend who had a planned trip to go to Italy, and his wife did not get her ballot, although said it was going to be mailed on the 5th. They left on Wednesday, and she didn't get it by Tuesday. Her husband went to the Willow Grove Annex to drop, put a thing in the drop box, and he sent me a couple of questions and concerns of his. And primarily, it says, "The election code only allows the ballot to be dropped into the box by the voter," and then it says, "It's going to be monitored," and then he probably turned it over to the DA. He said, "How's that happen?" He didn't know if the video machine worked. So I went yesterday for one hour between 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock, and I wanted to see just what was going on. First, I looked at the video monitor that's pointed down at the drop box. I went inside the Willow Grove Annex, and I asked the security guard there what was going on, and I didn't realize Voter Services has no personnel at Willow Grove Annex, and the security guard had nothing to do with the drop box. So I came out, and I noticed a couple of questions right off the bat. First, is the camera, camera working and is it monitored? And I wrote these to you. And then, there's instructions on the box, and I sent you a picture. The box has a tilted lid away from where people would go in, but if you turn around to the back of the box and look, the instructions are upside down. You have to stand in front of the box and look over like this, just to read the instructions. So I asked, "Why is that the case?" Then the third one was, there's a clock on the box, and it says, "Be back at 2:10." So I watched several people go, "Am I allowed to put it in now? Do I have to wait?" Goes this thing, and I asked that. So I called Paige in Voter Services to ask those questions. It's a convoluted process, just to get to Voter Services from the phone number that's on the top of the box upside down. And while I'm talking to her, a guy comes in and puts multiple ballots in the box. I said, "Paige, there's a guy right now putting a couple of ballots in the box," and the guy hears me saying, and then he looks at me, and he goes, "I'm putting five in the box." I said, "You all heard?" This guy just yelled it to me. So then, I said, "Paige, is your phone being recorded?" She said, "Yes." I said, "Did you hear the guy just say he put five ballots in the box?" And she said, "Yes." Hold on, I'm going to get somebody. So I took down the guy's number. Then, let's see, another car drove up and dropped at least two ballots in the box. I got that plate number, I sent it in to you. Then a Beamer drove, BMW drove up and dropped multiple ballots in the box, and I told them. I was sitting 20 feet away. So this is in one hour between roughly 3:00 at the box. I'd had some time to go sit there. Then a woman in a Tesla with New Jersey tags drops up, drives up in front of the box, gets out, walks around, and puts a thing in the box. Now, I don't talk to any of these people, I'm not taking pictures. I'm not there to intimidate anybody, I'm just watching what's going on. All this happened in one hour. Last night, I had a meeting, I got, can I finish this?
I'm going to let you finish it.
Yes, thank you.
I'll let you finish it.
So last night, I had some time after a meeting I had, and I went back for an hour at 11:00, basically. I just wanted to see what goes on at nighttime. Not one person showed up in the 62 minutes that I was there. So here's my point. Number one, it's your job in the county to make sure our elections go properly. The president of the Election Board said, "There's no, there's no evidence of, of, I don't know if she used illegal voting, fraudulent voting, or something," but I proved something last time, nobody in Voter Services ever got back to me. And this time, I called yesterday, was told the Voter Services guy would get back to me. Nothing back. So I can tell you, there were nine what appeared to be illegal ballots that were dropped, because if you don't have the proper authorization on that thing, then that's an illegal ballot. If you drop two ballots off in the box, that's illegal to do that. And if a guy drops five ballots off in the box, that's illegal also. I know of nine what I suspect are illegal ballots, and one person with a Tesla with Jersey tags on it that dropped a ballot off in Voter Services. So that's what I saw. I want to let you know, we're being affirmed of everything, but those boxes don't need to be open after 8:00 at night. There's nobody going there that doesn't have ill intent, in my opinion, okay? And what I saw was very troubling. Thank you.
What was the time, the time that you were there that, was it between, between 2:00 and 3:00?
Yesterday. Today, between 3:00 and 4:00. I got there about 2:55. I had to figure out the box. I went in sudden.
This was yesterday?
Yesterday. I'm sorry, yeah, Wednesday, between 3:00 and 4:00, I was there. I wrote you guys, I gave you the tag numbers. I can't give 100% accuracy, but there is a video there that you should be able to get those tags.
Right, I'm going to request, I want to pull the video, and then, and this was, what, 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 could you say the location again?
Willow Grove Annex, it's at, I'm sorry.
What, what, again, where was it?
Willow Grove Annex is at the corner of Davisville Road and Old York Road, right next to the train tracks right there.
So you sent us all this information.
I emailed it too.
Yep. It's on our.
I emailed it to Voter Services and to the Commissioners.
So first, let me say, if you're asking questions and inquiring with our Voter Services team, they should be getting back to you. So I apologize if you've asked questions in the past and people have not gotten back to you, but we are looking into this specifically. So thank you for sending the information.
Well, I stood here last time at the Voter Services meeting, and Neil said, "Look into that," to the gentleman who was there. I went down to the office to see him, he wasn't there.
We'll hold them accountable for not following through, so we'll.
And I want to back up what I told last time. I get excellent service from Paige at Voter Services, from the people that I talk to. I'm not here to get anybody in trouble. I'm here to say that we have problems with our drop boxes, and I'll go watch it again, but I was at one hour at one drop box at one location in the middle of the day, and people were willfully, it's right on the very front of it, it says, "You can only do one." They were dropping them in there with a video camera, they don't care.
So we're going to pull the tapes, we have our security, we're going to get our DA involved, and thank you for raising the issue.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up for public comment, Joe Brandon.
I have a statement I was going to read, but instead, I want to tell you about what happened to me about 9:15 this morning. I'm standing out in the hallway with my picket sign. A man from your office comes out. He tells me that somebody had called him and said, "I was wandering around fourth floor with my picket sign." I asked him who he was, he refused to answer. I said, "Who called you?" He refused to answer. I told him I was not wandering around. I went from the elevator to the register of wills to file a petition. I had the copy of the timestamp, date stamped of that document that I had filed. This is an ongoing campaign of harassment against me for the last three years, because I've been exposing a massive scam of guardianship corruption involving judges and guardians in Montgomery County, and also involving District Attorney Steele, as you see by my sign. This is involving the fact that I, for three years, I've been trying to get a very much loved person out of this guardianship scam. It's forced me to live in my car because of it. Now, the fact of the matter is that you won't hear about it by The Philadelphia Inquirer, because Judge Wildheimer's husband is chief legal counsel for The Philadelphia Inquirer. And since last June of last year, she had the county IT person, Olivieri, block my email address to all county elder agencies. I was using a Help This person, along with the District Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Department, and you Commissioners. And I think that is just beyond words of that kind of corruption, but you don't want to hear about it.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, Jenny Ramensheimer.
Jenny Ramensheimer, Lower Providence. I'm very sorry for your losses. I want to say that my mother was also very much involved in public service, and I'm very disturbed with what's happening to her right now. I've been here many times speaking about it. It's unfathomable to me that my mother's plate has not solicited any type of response, but I'm here again trying. Make no mistake, this tremendous harm done to my mother as a result of being torn from her home has happened because of your county adult punishment services and two truly evil attorneys funded by taxpayer dollars who forced her into ownership by a stranger improperly labeled as guardianship. This picture of a feces-infested hamper is the latest in hundreds of what she's had to endure by placing her into a care facility, which we have been prohibited from taking her out of. I have yet another unanswered email, this one to Commissioner, is it Winder or Winder? I'm sorry.
It's Winder.
I know you were going through a lot, so I didn't expect you to answer recently, but I've been doing this for two years to everybody, so I'm going to read parts of.
So you sent me an email?
I did.
I'll have my admin.
This is part of it, now, I understand. I didn't know at the time that you were going through all this. Anyway, I spoke at your meeting on March 7, 2024. There was somebody discussing disabilities. At that time, during the presentation, you mentioned how empathetic you were towards those with disabilities and those caring for such individuals. My mother developed multiple disabilities in her late 70s into her 80s, and my brother had a life, has a lifelong disability. Their main solace in life was being together. For years, my sister and I did quite a lot to support both of them physically and emotionally with all of their challenges. When we needed help because we were simply out of energy and resources, the county system failed all of us terribly. I've been having a very hard time understanding why it's so difficult to get anyone to take a serious look at the extremely detrimental guardianship arrangements perpetrated by your own Department of Aging. The department states that they provide a wide array of services and programs intended to help older Pennsylvanians live and thrive in their homes, and to support, give caregiver support. That's only part of their mission. Neither one of those things happened. When it comes to my mother, every single thing they did was the polar opposite of this. They did no research, no mediation, no transition plan, no assistance, no attempt to help her maintain her independence. They ripped her from her family and her home, shoved her into a subpar facility where she's been injured, ignored, isolated, depressed, frightened, filthy, soaking in her own urine, exposed to and suffer from COVID, scabies and other viruses and communicable ailments, communicable ailments, been deprived of her dignity and privacy, and subject to all other terrible things well-known to occur in nursing homes. This was preventable, and I'm really struggling to gasp why county, grasp why county officials don't look into this in order to make sure it doesn't happen to other vulnerable adults. I'm here as an advocate, I would love someone to just spend five minutes talking to me about how to make this system different. I don't think that's too much to ask. Thank you.
I will schedule, I will schedule time with you, okay? Just to make sure, we have your information?
Yes.
I will schedule time with you in the next week.
Okay.
I'm, I'm scheduling time with you in the next week. Any other public comment? Yes, Earl Murphy.
How you doing? I just want to comment on what he was saying about the guardianship thing. So we had a friend that I knew forever, right? So she started to get like dementia and stuff like that, but we was helping her, we was helping her out in everything, right? We was taking care of her, making sure everything was all right. So we called the county to figure maybe they would help, you know, because if we knew that it's like the guardianship, we knew they were going to take over and try to take everything from her, which, you know, we, we would never call them. So the guy would come out, it was like some kind of, I don't know, he would just come in and check on her. And so then, at, at one point, he had told us, he said, "All right, we're going to schedule her to go to court and stuff like that, right? So we can see if we can do a guardianship." But we didn't know the guardianship was going to come and take everything from her. So we's, so we had a, what you call it, they had a, they FaceTimed at her house. So we, so we had told the judge, you know, they had, we, you know, FaceTime, we was all talking, said, "Well, we're able to take care of her, we'll do this and do that," you know, we'll do different things for her. And then had we waste our time, we spent like half hour on FaceTime, just talking and all about, you know, think that maybe we can help her, you know? You think the judge would say, huh, well, we'll give them like three months or a couple of months to see how everything go. At the end of it, the judge said, all right, uh, we gonna do the guardianship thing. But like I said, had we knew the guardianship was gonna come and take everything, they took the woman's everything. She had like, they came in, um, took everything out of her house. She had like old stuff like Elvis things and old records and Beatles and that. The guardianship, they came in, but had we knew, when we called the county at the time, we would have never called them. We would have just said, oh, forget it. We thought we was helping the woman. But they came in, they wiped out everything. And I know somebody who was, who, who does the cleaning for the guardianship, he's a friend of the guardianship guy, and I know the guy pretty good. And he told me, that thing is a big scam. That's what he told me, right? And they came out and told, I swear, they took this woman's everything. She had old stuff like Elvis records and Beatle records. And they even gave some of, of, I ain't gonna mention the name. They even gave some of it to us because they was just throwing it in the dumpster. We was just going in the dumpster and taking stuff out of, you know, taking stuff out of the dumpster. It was like worth, it was actually worth stuff, you know? So that guardianship, just like they said, had the judge would say, well, maybe we'll give them three months 'cause we told we'll take care of her. Judge could have said, well, we'll give you three months or something like that, or a couple of months to see what happens. And then we'll go in. They ain't even give us time to do nothing, they just took everything. Just like, um, I'm just, I ain't trying to get off the subject. Just like the Kardashian guy with, with OJ. They said, um, he said he knew he was guilty, it was all about the money. And that's why I think the guardianship is all about the money. I mean, I mean, I don't know if, I don't know if you guys could do anything about it, but.
We have, we have no control over what the courts do.
Right. And you would think the judge would say like, all right, well, 'cause we even did FaceTime and everything, so actually, we just wasted our time. It seemed like the judge would have said, well, let me give them a couple of months to see what happens. They ain't even do that. At the end, at the end of everything, just, all right, we're gonna do the guardianship, but we didn't know the guardianship was gonna go and take everything from the woman. Man, we got, and I'm telling you, we got so much stuff out of it, like, they just took women's everything.
Thank you for your comments. So we, we have some, um, work to do in terms of understanding, um, our Office of Senior Services. Before I became a commissioner, spent time with them, trying to avail myself to, um, options for my parents. And so, uh, let us, let us do some investigation. And, uh, we have contact information, and, uh, thank you for.
And just like you said, remember you said that ju, what you said when you was a doctor, the doctors just had, would listen to what you was saying when you were delivery? All the judge had to do, just listen to what we was gonna say.
Sure.
You know, give us two months to see how good we do.
Yeah.
But they didn't.
Yeah, the courts are a separate, separate entity, and we don't have control over what they do.
But what guardianship been, I know I already spoke, but these are instituted by the county, that's why.
Understood, understood. What else, who else do we have? David Murphy? Tell me who's there, David Morgan.
David from Ambler, and, uh, I hope it goes well with the senior services, for those who just spoke. And my condolences, Commissioner Winder, about your mom. Uh, I think, better get this one in first, uh, it's about the fire department. I heard, uh, Mr. DiBello mention last meeting that Norristown might have all the consolidation of all the fire services in one building. And I think, in a big town, that reaching on time is important for fire departments. And we had emergency services here. So perhaps at commissioner level, you can evaluate where the service is going among all the different townships to see if someone on the edge of Norristown can get into Norristown where maybe the center is far away. Because time is of the essence in fires. You just gotta be there fast, so, um, that's first thing. Then, um, I thought I'd tell you that I'm really happy about all the things mentioned today in the start of the meeting. It was great, uh, hearing about the, um, effort to go to Laurel House for Child Abuse Month. It's good to see the North, uh, the reporter, the pinwheels picture for representing the children's concern. I am thankful for that. And, um, also for prenatal parent, sorry, parental leave, uh, that was great. I saw a picture of that in the paper. Um, also, the Mothers Alive program, which is announced this morning, uh, on the 30th. I hope everybody can go to that. And, uh, to consider also Pregnancy Resource Centers because they are such a boost to help the whole person. They might have, people might need, uh, trauma care, they might need housing, they might need, um, networking with the medical system, which helps the birth outcomes be better. Uh, they might need supplies like diapers, et cetera. So, uh, and some are ongoing for five years. So it's just amazing that these, uh, I've been in towards them, they're just absolutely amazing, the Pregnancy Resource Centers. Um, and then, um, to maybe have, um, also maybe sort of an education part of the website where people can go and how do we best, uh, manage parenting? And manage, um, preparing for parenting? Because it's a big job, and you don't really get training usually in high school or somewhere like that to be a parent. Then, um, I thought maybe one other idea, which is a little unusual, is, um, often you hear the term, when I grew up, uh, well, sorry, when I was at work, it was personnel, Department of Personnel, which is a personal name. And lately, I hear the term human resources, which, to me, is depersonalizing because you think of, there's the paperclips, there's the paper, there's the humans, and there, there, people are not viewed, I think, in a very helpful way by the term human resources. Instead, maybe personnel or resourceful humans. Switch it around. Because people have such talent, and they're just wonderful to know. And so I have a lot of friends, and you have a lot of friends. And so, uh, to call them human resource, who wants to be called a human resource? So just thought about, put that out there for you. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Mr. Morgan.
I, I want to make a quick comment. Uh, thanks, Dave. What I was referring to at the last meeting was Norristown Fire Company or Department. Uh, that's, that falls under their preview, purview of figuring out how the best, and that's working with the borough of Norristown, how to best figure and how to provide services throughout Norristown. So we don't have any say into that. They're investigating and researching if a consolidation makes sense or not for the benefit of Norristown. And also, if they do consolidate, where's the best location, uh, in Norristown so that they could properly, uh, you know, be available for everyone? But I also do know that fire departments are ready today, are already doing what you're talking about. They already have inner, like, they've communicate and interact with each other so that when calls come in, and then I know, uh, the first, uh, the emergency services, they have this all lined up. So when a call comes in, depending on where it is, certain departments are being dispatched. And so if it might be on the outskirts of Norristown, that doesn't just mean Norristown's going. They may be dispatching, um, you know, from other firehouses as well as, depending on what the call is, will depend on the kind of equipment that is sent as well. So it's a great suggestion, but I just want to let you know that that's already occurring.
Anyone else? Robert Galt Terry?
Good morning, Robert Galt Terry from Abington.
Good morning.
Congratulations on your election. I look forward to a fair and honest time going forward. My comment is on the, uh, website Moving Monaco Forward. When I went on there, I was curious because there was only two pictures up there, and I see three commissioners here. So it kind, I was kind of concerned about why there wouldn't be three commissioners and whether this was actually a bipartisan website. I also noticed that there was 10 subcommittees. And there was two chairpeople for each of those subcommittees. And at least eight individuals that were part of those. I noticed that there was a place to send in a resume if you wanted to be considered. And I'm wondering whether all these people had done that in the last three months because you've only been elected since January. And who exactly vetted those individuals to be on here? So that was my problem. So what I, what did I do? I sent an email to the proper place on the commissioner, uh, on that website. I did that twice in the last month, and I've heard nothing. So I don't know whether this is the proper place to do that, but I thought I'd come in and ask you in person, could you please get back to me on why these things are occurring? And is there any Republicans on that committee? And if not, do we have a group of individuals that are making decisions about what's gonna go on in the county? And there's no bipartisan information there, or any people there? So, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
If you could get back to me, you'll see that I have my email there. Thank you.
We'll, we'll get back to you. That was not an, an official, uh, effort. Um, so, so we are working together as, as commissioners. It was on the political side.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything else? Uh, the last person is Sandra.
I'm sorry, I just gotta make a quick comment because I'm getting, you know, people are reaching out to me as well, and I really haven't talked about it. But, uh, as mentioning, that Moving Monaco Forward, uh, initiative is, is not part of Montgomery County, uh, official business. Uh, I'm not part of that, that has to do with, um, party or partisan politics, which is, that's fine, everyone has that right to do. But, um, I'm not officially part of Mon, Moving Monaco Forward. Anything that comes in front of this, as commissioners, we deal with, uh, working with staff here. We work with, uh, Lee, um, and, and all the department heads, and all the information that we deal with on a weekly, daily, monthly basis is all coming from our staff. Um, I can attest to, um, what recommendations that, uh, my counterparts get from, uh, other individuals, just as I do get recommendations, thoughts, and ideas from groups of, of people out there. Um, and from time to time, I do bring forward things that I'm hearing or things that I think that we should also work on or participate in, or recommendations that I'm making. So all three of us do that. Um, and we all have sources of where that's coming from. So that part of what everybody's referring to is outside of the walls of, of, of Montgomery County.
But what.
Who's paying for the website?
Yeah, can I just?
That's, again, that's outside of the walls of Montgomery County.
Let me just say, this is something that began before we were even in office, and it's a tr- transition committee. Commissioner Winder and I ran together, Mr. DiBello had someone he ran with. And it's typical that when you win a majority, that you have a transition. And, uh, it's something that's, I, I wouldn't, I don't even know, you know, I don't know the voter registration of the people on there, but there are people who are invested in our success. And I think now that we're all here, uh, we're welcome to take recommendations from them. And, uh, it's gonna be considered by all three of us, and that's how it works. Yep.
Thank you for that.
Thanks for adding a little color. Any, anyone else? One more person on Zoom, Sandra Levine. Sandra, can you hear us? Sandra, you said? Yes.
Yes, I had to find how to be heard. Sandra Levine from Hatfield Township. I have several things I want to quickly say. Regarding the satellite offices, um, I think they came in very handy, but allowing the equal access for the whole of the county to know about them was, I don't know how you could do that because some people don't have emails. It didn't, I didn't remember that it came through the county. I got it through the, the party, and, and I had emails that I could send out to people. And it was a very helpful thing, but it needs to be given to everybody. I, I would think by mail because a lot of people, older people don't even have email, and some younger people don't also. I have a, uh, I think the satellite offices work well. I have a couple of questions. Signature verification, I do not understand why, when we come to the polls, our signature is verified, that it is our signature, not just that there's a signature that we signed in the book. And on mail-in ballots, anybody could make a signature, and nobody would know whether that was really the signature of the voter, him or herself, or not. And I find this not a fair thing at all. Um, I have another point. Um, I realized that if I signed up to be on one of these commissions that you were having, um, with the county, that I would then no longer be eligible to be a poll worker. And I find this very frustrating. I know somebody who was a judge of elections, and he was a volunteer head of the Franconiya Sewer Department. I find this irrational. We're begging for poll workers, and people who are volunteering for other things to help their communities or the county cannot then become a, a poll worker in, on Election Day. And I don't understand the logic of this. And I wonder if the commissioners have it in their power. I understand if you're on a payroll, a government payroll, but it doesn't make any sense to me. And if somebody could maybe, um, lift this regulation, we would get more poll workers, uh, who want to serve in their communities. And, um, I have a gentleman, I have the name of a gentleman, um, who is, he has an address, that he has not lived in a trailer, on a certain trailer pad, for more than a year. And yet, he is on my list as having requested an absentee ballot. And if he hasn't lived there for a year, and another person is living on that trailer pad, I've knocked on the door three times, and that person does not live there that applied for a ballot, I don't understand how that name and address appeared on the voter, um, the, the mail-in ballot request. And I would like to understand what I can do about that because something's wrong if the man hasn't lived there for more than a year. And I've been knocking on these doors for over two years. And, um, I don't know, if somebody could tell me what to do about that. Somebody else lives there and has no idea who.
Please stand up for your comments. The time is up. Thank you. Anyone else?
No.
Okay. Um, any closing commissioner comments?
Uh, uh, just two. I, I need, I, somebody asked me this before because I'm not sure if it was always like that or if it was recently went into effect about if you hold a position, um, like on a commissioner zoning hearing board or whatever it may be, that you, you can't work at, um, at the polls. Uh, so I need to understand a little bit further about that because I, I wasn't aware of that before because I know many times over the years, many people worked at the polls but held other positions. In fact, if, if most, most committee people for either Democratic or Republican parties are elected positions, so one would say, based on what we're stating, they shouldn't be able to work the polls. So I, I need to really understand that, um, a little bit further. And also, I just want to mention, we, we talked a lot about drop boxes, and we did mention, um, the hours on, on Tuesday, on Election Day. Um, and I, I get this question also. If I, if I got a mail-in, if I got my mail-in ballot, but I want to vote in person, what do I do? And I, I just want to make sure, I know it's on the website, but I just want to throw it out there real quick. If you get a mail-in ballot, and you decide you want to vote in person on Tuesday, what you, all you need to do is bring your entire packet that you got in the mail, bring it to the election, bring it to the poll, uh, hand it in to the J O E, the judge of election. Um, and then once you do that, they will allow you to vote in person. Um, and then the provisional thing comes into play is if you're on the books of receiving or requesting a mail-in ballot, and you show up to vote, and you don't have your ballot,